All right. We'll now come to order, so welcome to Monday, November 17th for Town of Florence Work Session. Call into the order, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Eaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam. Councilmember Bucelato. Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bencina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Councilmember Neal will be late this evening, so he'll be, we'll note when he comes in. So, thank you for that, Lisa. Item number three is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call of the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So, we have zero people in the council chambers tonight, and it looks like we have zero people online. So, with that, I'm gonna now close our call to the public. Item number four is our work session. Item number four A is discussion on the Town of Florence Compensation Plan Fiscal Year 2025-26. Mr. Walls.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. We wanted to go and put this work session together to go to merit increase for our employees. And I don't know if we're necessarily gonna call it a merit, but some type of increase for our employees. And that's gonna be the first topic of our discussion. As we talked recently in our executive session, I kinda, I guess I'll kinda drift in to be a little bit too boss, if that's okay.
Please.
We talked about the difficulty that we were having in reference to our evaluations. And I told council that I would like to go ahead and consider not having the evaluations as part of the raise process. We're just running into too many difficulties. What I consider to be called the halo effect, where our employees were rating, or where our supervisors rating our employees at the top of the scale, even though some of them may not be operating at the top of the scale. So, that's probably one of the first things that I wanted to go and talk about. If you go to, if you look at Section B and we start talking about policy, if you all could go to Section 606 in your handout, under the Employee Classification Compensation Plan. And a lot of the highlights and line-throughs, you see, that's Catherine's side of the house. I'm gonna go ahead and cover the increase side, and Catherine can go ahead and talk to you about some of the administrative things that she's done in this policy. But if you run to 606, it talks about performance merit increases. And the paragraph that I'm concerned about, which I would like to go and have ruled, is the first blue paragraph that talks about, everybody's with me? It says employee evaluations will be completed annually. Merit increases will be given only if the fiscal year budget includes an approved merit increase. Merits will be paid at the time designated by the town council. The effective date will be aligned with the first day of the pay period. All eligible employees will be paid a merit increase in accordance with their performance evaluation scores. If we are to go and get rid of performance evaluations and making a determination about whether or not pay should be increased, this paragraph has to be removed. And again, I'm coming to council for a little bit of discussion. I believe that right now, we are not ready to do pay increases for our employees based on the evaluation system. If you go back and look also in your packet, you'll see, we have not done a merit increase for our employees in probably about eight years. I really think we're far behind in terms of getting a real evaluation on our employees that dictate what they're doing, in, in a place that gives a real meaning to a performance increase. We're just not there. So, that would be the first topic of conversation that I'd like to go and have with council, and see if council has any questions about that. We kinda talked about a little bit in executive session, but.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
So, I have a question, and I take your guidance. Nobody knows our team better than you. Is this on a year-by-year evaluation basis? In other words, if we do go to cost cola, is that forever, or do we revisit this in a year?
So, I'm proposing that we take the evaluation system completely out. I've had some conversations with other town managers, and I think I said this last time, I'd probably say it was about 50/50. But what I will go ahead and tell you that all the town managers said, is that if they could get away from this program, they totally would.
So, if, if I can, just to clarify, because I, I think what you're saying is that the evaluation process that is tied to the merit base, not taking out the evaluation process?
No.
We will still have an evaluation, correct?
Yes.
But it's just not gonna be tied at this time, is, or forever? Or, do you think that there's a time when we can get to that point? And I think we've had this conversation a couple times, and I know that we had it here when we were going through budget, and, and talking about some of this stuff, where it, it's difficult. Merit, merit and evaluation is difficult in a municipal setting. Just trying to make sure it's, it just is so subjective, and I, and I get that. The evaluation process is absolutely necessary, I believe. I mean, we have to have an evaluation. Now, I would also tell you that I believe that evaluation process happens all year long. It doesn't, not because it's due in April, that that's where you're getting your evaluation, that your, your, your supervisors should, you should know every day where you stand and what, what's going on with yourself. So, that's a whole nother thing. So, but what you're saying is, at this time, you wish for, to not have the evaluations tied to a merit increase?
That is correct. Council, we will still have an evaluation system, we will still go ahead and rate our employees. However, I just don't think it's going to be a legitimate system when it's tied to money.
So, I have another question. So then, how do we recognize our employees that go above and beyond? Is there a bonus system, or what can we do? Because I really truly feel some of our employees do that extra, and I'd love to see them recognized somehow.
Vice Mayor. Mayor, councilmembers, you all kinda talked about that at the last executive session that we had. And whether or not you all come up with some type of stipend, not in reference to the raises, but some type of stipend that you all could go ahead and give, your exceptional performers, that could be a practice that you all could go ahead and include.
Whether.
We also have, I wanna make sure, we also have various recognition programs where we can go ahead and recognize our outstanding employees. Don't want council thinking that money is the ultimate thing here, because it's not. I believe our employees are here because they want to go ahead and be here, especially if you go and look at the structure of what our employees are making versus everybody else. Our employees are here because they enjoy the environment that they work in, they enjoy being, working in this town, and they enjoy the entire, the environment that we bring. This is only a small portion of it, and as far as I'm concerned, we're just going back and telling our employees, "Thank you for the job that they've done."
Tony? Go ahead, Mo.
So, I'm a firm believer that sometimes the guys that turn wrench, guys and gals that turn wrenches, being a blue collar worker myself, yeah, having a little bit of here and there is cool, but like getting that recognition, like, "Hey, thank you for what you did," and whatever, sometimes that goes a little bit further. And like I said, where I work now, we get bonuses, like on a, but that's on the tribe. So, that's something different, you know, where they, they have so much revenue left over, and, and everyone gets one. So, it's not really like you're, you're actually recognizing anybody, but it's just like a bonus, like, "Hey, we did really good this year. We saved this much money. We're gonna pass that on to, you know, the workers or the folks." But like I said, I don't, I come from federal service where the system was overinflated, but what you do is to get, and nothing was tied into money, but it's tied into how you make the next step or the next rank. So, when you, when you do your, your evaluations, you say, "Hey, look, this is what you, where you're working towards, you're doing really good." So, that person knows that they're headed towards the next step in, in, in rank or in, in job. I understand some jobs, you're kinda like there, and that's it, there's no way to move up. But as long as you, we're showing them in their evaluations, "Look, you're doing well." Like, "Hey, you can work here a little bit better," and, and use that as incentive to, to make them work towards the next, like, for example, like wastewater, working towards the next grade. And we're already giving them the education, that, that's stuff that you can't really put a price on. So, I, like I said, I believe, I concur that, you know, like sometime, this is gonna be hard to do, to do this incentivizing with, on, on pay raises with tied, tied to their, to their evaluation. So, I think there's other things, other motivators, so it doesn't really always have to be money.
Councilmember Maldonado, you're absolutely right. And in our evaluation system, we have what's called SMART goals. And that's where the supervisor will go ahead and sit down with an employee, and in order to go ahead and be prepared for that next level, they have to do X, 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 and X. So, our supervisor's sitting down, and they're putting those goals together to go ahead and make sure that our employees are successful at meeting the next level. You're also talking about feedback. What we've instituted here is where our employees should be talking, or our supervisors should be sitting down with our employees and talking with them on a 30-day basis. This is what you're doing well, maybe here's an opportunity for improvement. Because at the end of the day, when it comes to that year evaluation, we want them to go ahead and be successful.
Tony?
As I stated a few times now, that, you know, I didn't think the program would work when the Army and Air Force Exchange Service launched it. But the first year was pain, because you had to go tell people, "You're not getting a 3% pay raise, you're getting a 1%." And, whoa, hang on a minute, and then you look at your performance review. I can understand what some of the problems are, is that some people only have, if you go into community development, then they don't have two of people, or three of people, right, in jobs. They all have different job titles, senior planner, planner, so it makes it difficult. But somewhere in there, the community development director has to decide, "Who is my star here is gonna get the most pay increase?" I, you know, when you don't look at this. For me, I had people in equal jobs. I had 12, I had 30, and I was evaluating that. Also, if I overevaluated, when it went to the approver, the approver would ding the P E R and bring it down some in what they had to say. And they would, you know, they would make a mark and say, "Okay, this guy is, is not my shining star out there. So, you know, I'm gonna bring the performance review down," and to make sure if the raider is not gonna be honest, okay? Because yeah, I saw managers come in with all, everybody was superstars, and, because they didn't wanna hurt anybody's feelings, okay? The system works if, if, if people are forced to do it. And you, and you go back as an approver going, "Sorry, I can't approve this performance review. Give it another try, okay? And here's why I'm feeling this way, and then you're gonna have to justify it to me." I don't see how you could do anything. You couldn't, like Kathy says, give a bonus to the star employee. Who is it? Because we can't give a P E R and a pay raise that's, that's at a higher level than the rest of the employees. So, how are we gonna give bonuses? I like the idea, but we also identify star performers. We got a board out here now, okay? Somehow, we're using some performance measure to decide who's star, who's the star, star employee. So, I, I call bull, I've done it in civilian life with merit pay, and I've done it in the government, okay? It works once you get through the first year and you get through the pains. And sometimes the approver, which is you for the performance review, has to say, "Sorry, I can't approve this performance review at that rate." I mean, at that's, at that level of score. And, and you send it back for, from to review it again. We're never gonna get nowhere, and, and it's been proven out there that merit pay improves morale in your operations when it's done correctly. Getting there and doing it correctly is the issue, but, you know, I'm one person, so.
Councilmember Nicole.
I know when I was at PCSO, they had the step increases, so you would hit the first tier after two, two, three years, whatever it was, and then evaluate, go to the next tier. And I, and I know that worked pretty well. It's kind of, I agree with Tony said about, it's kinda hard to evaluate when everybody has a lot of different jobs within the agency. Nothing will, no agency will lose somebody quicker, though, than, some people do their work behind the scenes. They're not like, "Hey, look what I did, look what I did, look what I did." And then you have another person that's showing you constantly what you did, or maybe, "Hey, they've been here longer, they're your right hand, you can rely on them, they cover you." And then that person gets the increase, and the person that's maybe doing the work that maybe you don't know about, or, or that's not always like, "Hey, look at me, look at me," gets passed over, and then, it's just, it's a touchy subject. I don't, I don't know what, what will work. I, I think if we're gonna do merit, okay, let's like slowly start working towards that in the next couple years, but I think step increases work really good, too. It helps keep us competitive, it helps, it's not one big lump sum all at once, it, it gives us a little bit of time to work at it. And then when you finally hit, let's say there's seven steps, and you're maxed out, then you get one lump sum check. And I know it's like, kind of at the county, what they do right now is if you're maxed out in your pay grid, then in September, they sent out one lump sum bonuses to all the people that were maxed out. So, you get a one-time payment from the county, because you can't get any more increases, you're, you're at the top. And I know people really appreciate that check, and it, and it kinda helps out, and it's something that they look forward to. I, I really don't know what the answer is. I, I'm not a fan of merit myself. I'm a person that I just kinda do my job, and I lay low, and I don't really need anything. I just kind of do what I'm supposed to do, and, and hit those marks. And I wouldn't be a person that maybe would stand out to somebody a lot, you know? And I, I'm not saying that the directors can't, you know, do their jobs, or the managers that are here can't do their jobs, I just feel like it's something fairly new. And we have a lot of also new directors, as I've talked about in each session, and I think like, let's let them get their footing, let's let them see what needs to be done, what expectations are, let's grow the teams, because, you know, we're still hiring in a couple positions, and maybe like reevaluate after that. But I've never really been a fan of merit, I've seen it kinda go sideways sometimes, and I just feel like it's kind of, if it's not done right, it's, it's tricky, because then you can lose people if, if the wrong people are getting those increases, and the people that are doing the work aren't. I don't think, I think people jump ship a lot faster, and it just makes me worried with all these new incorporated cities coming around us. I, you know, I don't wanna lose our staff somewhere else, but I think pay is a big deal for people, and I think we could figure something out. I just, I like the step, I don't know if that's something that could be done here, because we do have different jobs, but I think it's nice for somebody to kinda look forward at, "Hey, if I am doing good, this is what I will be at." It's really no questions after that, you know, if you hit it, you hit it. And I think, like on our, we also have SMART goals, and we have not performing or performing. If you don't hit performing, you're not getting it, and it is what it is, and we know right then and there at our evaluation, and I don't know, just.
Tony?
Well, the one thing I don't understand is, how'd we get here? You know, last year, previous council was upset that merit wasn't in place, sitting in a work session. And so, it's been a process of years, if I understand right, of trying to move this town to merit. So, then we finally moved to merit, and now we're wanting to move away from merit.
So, I would like to clarify.
Please.
So, last year, what they were talking about at the work session was a thread system. It's an evaluation system for employees, like a software. So, what the HR team was doing was they were getting everybody scheduled within the thread system, and teaching both the employees how to do a self-evaluation, plus teaching the supervisors how to evaluate. So, remember, there's frontline supervisors, then there's mid-level supervisors, and then there's department heads, and the evaluations go up. And so, it used to be, prior to having threads, it used to be all done by paper, right? So, somebody would fill out your scores on paper, and then they would take it through all of these supervisors, everybody would sign off, and then it would come over to the manager. But I'd always ask HR, "How, did they review their last year's evaluation?" And they would say, "No, they didn't review their last year's evaluation." So, how do you know how to evaluate them if you don't look at the dynamics behind what you told them they needed to do this fiscal year? So, now, our new system, Threads, which we're fully on, it's been fully integrated, has it to where not only can they see from now on every evaluation, but also they can get kudos from across the aisles. So, that means somebody in administration can say, "Thank you to HR, thank you to an employee that was helping you along the way." And you can also put in little notes to make evaluating easier at the end of the year. So, it was not a merit system, it was a tool that we were putting in place that we weren't ready with. Does that make more sense?
I understand you, you put a tool in, and yeah, I did my performance reviews online versus having to type them out, and, and mess them up, and have to do it all over again. So, yeah, that was the process, which took a little longer than, I guess, to, to be able to get the system implemented. But my understanding, my feeling is that when we decided to go for merit this year, we were at that point that all that process had been, training had been done.
Well, our system is up and running. It is used. Catherine can say how many people have filled out, and how many people have not filled out. Town of Florence, since I've been working here 31 years, we've always issued increases on merit. But there are municipalities out there that do do step, and they do look at other things, and there are municipalities out there that do give stipends. We give stipends as well when somebody is tapped out and they're giving a raise. So, we do all of those things. And so, we can do whatever council wants, and we can have something prepared, whatever we're directed to by next budget cycle, because that's when we would make the big change. Would give us time to be able to do it the right way. It's just a math component. So, right now, you have, I believe, a 40% spread in your scale. Are we 40 or 50? We're 50% spread in the scale, start to finish. So, if council said by 20 years, every employee should be at top out, then we simply go in and create those scales based on that. Steps.
So, Councilmember Bedford.
My thing is, I think that the town manager should decide that. I, I know we, council and everything like that, but I think I don't like merit. It becomes favoritism and things like that. If I'm good with my director, my director can give me a high pay. It's, it's hard to decide what to do, so I'm saying to you, Mr. Walls, what do you wanna do for the staff?
So, let me, let me add some more stuff to this before I forget it, because you know I see a lot of squirrels and stuff. So, so, Councilmember Bencina, you are correct. When we had this conversation, we've talked about this, I talked about the merit system when I worked here in that seat, and trying to get it, trying to get it going. That was a conversation, "Are we ready? Do we think we can do this?" And we were told yes. So, you're absolutely, I heard the same thing. So, it's not a secret that I don't like a merit because of subjectivity. I don't, don't hate it, it absolutely can work, it absolutely could, we could absolutely make it work. It's so difficult, and it's not our directors, it's our mid, our lower and middle managers, the people that are out there, and, and probably the easiest, the easiest evaluation to do is the guy on, on the end with, with the fire chief, because his evaluations are more objective than anybody else's, so than public works. Probably the hardest one is public works, because we have so many middle managers, lower managers. And so, so the subjectivity, and, and not necessarily, and, and what Sherri says, is absolutely true. And it's not only the possibility of being a friend with somebody to give them 4%, because you're a friend with them, it's the perception. It could be a perception, the perception is real, and everybody's life, right? So, that, you know, this guy, "Oh, you guys went fishing? Oh, all of a sudden, you get 4% and I get 2%, because I didn't go fishing." Or, "You didn't answer your phone at 5:30 in the morning to go golfing." You could do, uh, do that, right? So, anyway, anyway, so, so, I'm the same, and Councilmember Bedford said, and I think everybody believes this, too, is that when it gets down to it, it is our town manager's responsibility to figure out what he wants to do, and, and the senior staff. If we're not ready right now, I, I, I want to see something deeper, if it's a step. I have worked most of my career as step, because I knew that at 20 years, I was gonna be here, and it gets somebody to work for. And so, this is a much bigger conversation than today, because now it becomes our budget conversation. Because now, if we look, if we decide we wanna do steps, we have to decide two or three things. We also have to talk about our public safety systems, and how public safety is paid, which in my mind is different than everybody else. And we have some different things, so this is a huge conversation. For me, I believe, and, and we've talked about this before to this body, is that getting something done for our employees now, whatever that is, and then dig hard and work to figure out what we're gonna want come budget season. So, Ms. Wilson.
Bruce, before you can answer another question. I'd like to clarify something about stipends that everyone needs to keep in, in mind. When we give a stipend, our police and fire, that doesn't go towards their retirement. It is not a compensatable item. So, anytime we're doing that, we have to take that into consideration. So, if you're talking about doing that this year, that would be a consideration. If we're talking about doing it ongoing, that's another consideration, is that it will not go towards their pension in the end. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Great.
Yeah, I, I was capped, so I used to get a check once a year. So, it couldn't help my retirement.
I'm listening to everybody, and I do agree with Councilmember Bencina, I've worked under, and I, it's not the systems. I lean towards, as Councilmember Bedford does, towards letting the town manager make the decision, because you know our people, right? And you know how they will react, you know what they're capable of implementing in terms of this system. And so, I trust your judgment in this. All I was pointing out is that I'm, I'm hoping it does evolve into something a little bit more granular because of budget. I mean, anytime you're talking about across-the-board increases to everybody, and we know our town's gonna grow, and hopefully we'll have more employees, right? It gets hard to control, right? So, I do think there has to be consideration at some point. But I'm perfectly happy for you to make the decision, and if you don't think we're ready for merit, I'm fine with it.
Nicole?
As I said, too, I, I agree, when we were in each session, I agree, I think this is Bruce's call, I think he knows what's best for the town, I think he knows the staff, I think he talks to his directors a lot more than we do. But I also agree with Kathy, and in the future, I think we need to figure out what we're gonna do, and, and really, when we commit to that, go to it. And I know, and I just wanted to clarify, I've never been a fan of the merit, not last year, not the year before. I, me and Bruce have had conversations about the merit, and it's just something that I've seen, I've worked in, and it, it left a bad taste in a lot of people's mouth, if not done right. So, I would like to also see something in the future, figure it out, on what we can do, and kinda to give the staff a little more stability, because as you said, eight years, you know, long time to not be getting this type of increase, and I feel like maybe we could hold on to more staff if we have something more stable for them to look forward to.
Like I said, I'm, I'm at the point, I agree with them, that you basically said this year's a fail trying to implement merit. So, we have to do something. I hope between now and the next time, we have to make a decision that either we're gonna move forward with merit, or we're gonna come up with a different plan going forward, so we don't discuss that when it's time to sit down and do a raise, you say, "Well..." So we don't discuss that when it's time to sit down and do a raise, you say, well, performance reviews didn't work again, so I can't do merit this year. So, you know, I can agree, we will move on to some type of a pay raise, if that's what the council wants to do. But again, I just look at it, it was a failed implementation and hopefully we'll learn from it going into next year if we're going to do it again. So figure out the problems.
Okay.
I absolutely agree with what everybody's kind of saying around the table. What I will say is, is this, I do believe that, well, first, let me go ahead and tell you, the promise that we made about evaluations being completed this year, they will be completed this year. We will finish the thread systems. The problem that we're running into is we can come back in and I can go ahead and mandate that each evaluation that I review, I can come back and go and say, that's, no, that's not going to happen. We still can go ahead and make that happen. What I talked to council about at the executive session is I think that's going to go ahead and kill morale. And right now I think we're at a pretty good place as far as teamwork is concerned. But if I sit back and I will tell you, there are a lot of evaluations that were very subjective. And even in the military program, your civilian program, those were subjective as well. So we have to make sure that if we get into a process where we use the evaluation as a system for pay, that it is fair and that it is equitable. And in that, that I think we are quite a ways away. I got a few directors that will go ahead and write, like they need to go ahead and write, but I have some that aren't going to go ahead and do that. And that's unfair to those that have taken the process and done it the way that they're supposed to. So that's what I want to come back in and go ahead and fix. We can get it done. What I'd like to do, and I think we mentioned that in the executive session, is let's do this to go ahead and fix it, whatever council decides tonight, but then we come right back in December and January, when the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bencina sitting at the table and we figure out how we're going to go ahead and move forward. That's going to be our budget process and setting aside money, if that's what we're going to go ahead and do for a step program, for a COLA program, whatever it's going to go ahead and be, we start that discussion. I will firmly admit, I told council that I would go ahead and get this done, but I'm not going to come back and go ahead and say that Bruce Walls is not infallible, I am. And I do not think right now that this will work for our employees and in fact, I think it will go ahead and degrade morale.
Okay. Well, it's fair enough. And, and nobody's saying, I told you so. So just saying, so everything was, nobody's, nobody's against you here, nobody's doing that. No, I mean, it, it is what it is, you know, and, and we talk about this and we've talked about this for, for a long time in the town, but, and what has changed is leadership. Leadership, constant change of leadership is what's delayed, delayed, delayed. We've got, we've, we went from, from losing the leader and then Lisa interiming and then we got another leader and we lost him and then Lisa entering, back to where, where Bruce is right now, which is our permanent, permanent guy in here. So here, you're late, so you have to sit next to the principal. The way this works, Councilmember Neal, welcome. So, so anyway, no, I, and, and I agree with that, you know, whatever that is, because we, we do need that guidance. And, and of course, we look at Councilmember Bencina and the Vice Mayor as, as this, this is our, our budget committee and, and this has to be known very quickly. I mean, we've got to work on this very quickly to figure out what you want to do there. So, so as far as that, so there's, there is, let's go back.
So Mayor, I'm assuming council's all in agreement, we'll move away from a merit increase, where it will be decided who gets what, to an increase out there of some sort that's just going to be applied across, across, right?
This year?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Do you want us, as you see the policy that is written in your, that's coming before you tomorrow, do you want us to remove the word merit from that policy or would you like us to leave it in until you make a decision to move away from it?
So, so the way this is, and so probably should have addressed this, so what you'll see tomorrow, in tomorrow's packet, is largely the same thing you see in today's packet. So because we were having this conversation, we had to make sure that we are, we are advertising both options for tomorrow night.
Explain, if it's merit, it goes to the current employees, but does not increase the pay structure, like a COLA would, right? Okay.
As a matter of fact, it, it goes to the base pay of the employees as a, a merit.
Right.
But it's not like a COLA, it would not be applied to the pay scale.
For all jobs, people applying in the future.
Right.
Right. Okay. So then, as Tony asked, then are, are we kind of a consensus to move away from a merit system for this year?
Not merit pay, we're going to call it a merit pay, I would think.
I think we're just going to call it an increase this.
A merit increase?
No, we're just calling it an employee increase.
Right, we're taking merit out. We're just going to call it an increase.
Current employees only.
Correct. Correct. Okay.
So, we're, so if I come in and I apply for a job, am I going to get more than somebody else that's already been here?
No, that's why I'm asking for the wording to be correct.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so is that?
Can I do a clarification?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, so currently when people come in and, and the director recommends hiring salary, we look at not only what the director is recommending, but we also do what we call an internal equity look. So we look at the people who are already in the positions and we let the director know how many they have, like say it's, let's just say it's a maintenance worker one. So we let that director know how many maintenance worker one people that he has and what their, what they, their current salaries are, so that that director can make a wise choice. Unless the person coming in has extra experience that outweighs what someone else already in the position might have, we are, we hope that the director would hire them below who's already, the employees who are already here. That's to alleviate compression on the scale for the employees who are currently working.
Something comes in at like a grade three, four, double works, obviously they're going to make more than one.
Exactly. Yes, yes.
But they, they have the objective pieces to make them that way. So, so, and that was a question I think you had too, as far as when we're hiring right now. And I don't want to get too far off, because this is not exactly what all we're talking about. But when we're hiring, you, you have a range that you hire in, that's not necessarily you hire in the low range. You have a range that you hire generally mid-grade. You try to hire mid-range if you can, but you, you have the ability to hire in a range.
Yes, the directors have an ability to hire from the lowest, from the min to the, the mid. But again, we look at the equity of what's already in, because, you know, in succession of how people are hired, unless that person newly coming in has a lot more experience than the last person who came in, we wouldn't recommend that they hire that person higher than the most recent person who was hired into their department in that position.
I want to just clarify, council sets the scale.
Right.
So from the ranges, the dollar amount, that's the minimum, the dollar amount's the maximum. The department head makes the recommendation for hire and puts in an amount that they would like to hire them from. The manager is the one that has the authority to hire them at what rate. So I just want to make sure when we talk about the department head offering them a rate, it's the manager that offers that rate.
But how of, how often do we hire somebody at the beginning salary in a range?
If they have no experience, we'll hire them. If it, their first time department head, we'll hire them at the beginning of range. If it is a, I need to re-prove myself in my career, we hire them at that range. So it depends on the story behind the human being that we're hiring, of where they're placed on the scale.
Tony, did that answer that? I know you.
It's getting there.
Okay, we'll get there. Nicole.
But all of it's ran through HR to make sure that it's fair and, okay.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm getting at, is we, we have a form.
Yes.
We supply information, we try to help the directors make their recommendation. Then a lot of times the town manager will come back and ask me again, what's the internal equity? What are these people making? I give him the information and let him know who was hired most recently, what they're making, what their experience was, and then he makes the final decision.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
So in terms of giving guidance, is it acceptable that we give the guidance that we prefer not to see, I prefer not to see merit in the packet, because it's confusing. It sounds like council is giving the town manager that option. The town manager has stated that he doesn't think we're ready. So I would rather not see that language in.
You were just, you said increase instead of merit or it would be increase.
Just take merit out everywhere. Okay.
We can go into 606 and we can talk about, we're going to go in and we're going to revamp it to where it'll fit this year and then next year we'll revamp it when we decide what we're going to do again. But we'll make it match what we do this year.
Okay. Now, now we are doing everything, we're giving you everything tonight to make sure that we are still within our posted packet for tomorrow night to move forward on this.
So we have a posted packet, but what I'll do is I'll do a handout on the floor.
Okay.
And that way, and I'll also do an addendum that I will update the packet as well.
Okay, online. So it'll be, we'll add that in as an extra so people can see that.
And you're allowed to do that.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay. That got through that.
One more, one more quick question. So you said in the, in the process, the director or the supervisor sits down with the employee and establishes SMART goals. Did those get done? Are you comfortable that SMART goals got accomplished?
Yes and no. So for director level, absolutely, it got done. But my mid-level supervisors, no sir, they need some work.
Because that's the only way you can evaluate is to get SMART goals.
Yep. Okay, well, let's, so we've got part of it worked through here on 4A. So Bruce, you want to take then, I know we kind of popped off into some of the stuff. Do we want to have conversations about percentages, what we're looking at, what you're proposing? So to give you the guidance. If you guys will look on page three of four, that financial impact, kind of goes down through a little bit too. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm again, Lisa's team, Carl, they put together a little package that assigns a numeric, I believe it's two, three, four, and a stipend. There's also a product in there that talks about not giving a incentive to the town manager or deputy town manager. So kind of wanted council to go ahead and look at that. And again, I, I'm going to go ahead and tell you what I've said to council in the executive session. Again, my fear is, is that we have a outstanding working team right now, from my managers all the way down to employees. Again, I don't think pay is the number one issue our employees hear, however, I think we need to go and reward them. I do not want to lose any employees to another organization. That's my main concern. We've jumped over some pretty high hurdles this year. And to have to repeatedly come back in and hire people to go ahead and get to the same level that we're at right now, I don't think that the town deserves that. The town deserves the people that we currently have in place. And what I would like to go ahead and see again, I've talked to town managers, several over the course of the month, and they're anywhere from a three to a 5% raise for their employees. Won't get into talking about police and fire, because that's way off the scale, but for the most part, three to five for their employees. I am recommending to council that we do a four across the board for our employees. Council has in front of them, and I'll let Carl kind of jump in there a little bit, but council has in front of them, a workup that you all can go ahead and take a look at and then make your decision on where you think we should go ahead and be. But again, my line on it is, is I know what our employees have done this year. I think they've worked hard and I think they deserve a 4%.
So, and I'll, I'll open it up. So, you know, I, and I don't think that any decision that we make here is, whether what's agreed to is telling our employees we don't appreciate them. You know, I think there is a, there is a balancing act that goes on here with our money, our revenues, that is, that is always dwindling and, and just trying to figure out, kind of looking into that crystal ball that we, none of us have and trying to make sure that we're covered on all services. And hopefully employees don't take that personally, that we're, we don't feel that they're worth it, we just have to try to balance everything out and the way it goes. So, so with that, I'll open it up for Councilmember Vice Mayor.
So I have a question, the 373, 670 total at 4%. That's what it would cost if we chose 4%. And my question would be, Carl, what is that, the existing base that we're adding, the 373 to? And it's not so much the total amount. I don't know if we look at our budget in terms of percent of the pie, right? So what is that doing to our salary as a percent of our budget?
I didn't calculate that.
Right, I know, I understand that. But that's the kind of view that I'd like to understand, because it's hard to, to just take this as a little piece of the discussion, right? I don't know, is 373 doable?
So we have in our, we budgeted, if you remember, a 4% merit at 50% of the year. So we have that built into our budget, but that turns into 4% next year. So when you look at the seven, seven month, is that 373? Next year, that'll be $640,000 to the budget.
That we already budgeted for.
No, we haven't done next, not in next year's budget.
Yeah.
Carries over, so.
Yeah.
So the, the 4%, the 373, what I did is I took our current employees roster from our last payroll and anybody that was here 12 months, I applied these rates, two, three, four, to them. And so anybody under a year, they're not in that number or part-time staff is not in that number.
But they are next year on the impact, at least the full time, not the part-times, but the full times that's not here this year to be paid, they will be paid next year.
Yes, next year, it's, it's full everybody.
So we're, so we are looking at then a forever, forever number of $640,000 at a, at a 4%. Who else? Tony?
So, you know, I've stressed my view and I love employees. I deeply care about employees, care about my staff, you know, every one of them. But, you know, as a company that I used to work, you know, I used to have to live within the budget given to me and, and I never saw anything over three allowed as a budget. If I look at where we are and listening to, when I sat in last year, watching the work session, you know, the mayor at the time tried to throw out a 5% pay raise. Council got her down to four, but the, the town, acting town manager and the finance director were pushing for three, because that was in the budget. That's the money they had the revenues for. The extra 1% was going to cost, if I can remember, around $174,000 to give one more percent. That meant they had to take it from general revenue unless that, unless during the year they came under budget to absorb it. But that 174 was going to be there forever. I look at the pay raises that have been given in 2022, 23, when the residents increased the town's budget on the, on the bond and we restructured all the wages by the wage survey, that cost the town $2.5 million to bring everybody's wages up to par with what the survey said they should be at. It was followed by a 6% pay increase, cost of living, followed by a 4%. And this year we're wanting to do four again. We can't afford it, I, I've got to tell you. We raised property taxes last year from the tax levy in the budget previous year and they recouped $144,000 of the 174 we spent for one more percent. We're going backwards. We're down $1.5 million in shared revenues in the last two years. We're not getting it back. We could be down a few hundred thousand this year more, plus we're projected to lose 1.5, 1.7 million dollars in '27 with Santana Corporation. Someone please tell me where the money is to replace this stuff. If you give pay raises, you're going to start losing out on new vehicles, new equipment. You're not going to be able to replace last. You're not gonna be able to replace laptops every three years. You're gonna have to push out five. You're gonna have to find money to replace stuff. You can't raise taxes. The tax levy in this town five years ago was a dollar ten. We're at a dollar two now. Okay? So where are you going to pay for this? We didn't open up a large Walmart or anything paying us millions of dollars in, in sales tax. We opened up some restaurants and some small stuff paying little, little sales tax revenues, which are great. But tell me where we're gonna get this money to replace what we're losing. Talking about raising sales tax by, up to one and a half percent to get road money and some general fund money. So three percent, I've lived at three percent and I thought, well, it's great. I just got a two eight five on social security. Okay? If I look out in the world, the average merit increase this year is three point two percent in the private world. Okay? So that's merit. Okay? So the inflation in Arizona is at one point four percent for the last year in Phoenix, Mason, Scottsdale. So it hasn't gone up that much. We also absorbed four percent in medical and dental premiums that cost us a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that we don't recoup from the employee because we give them free medical insurance. We got a little bit back from the family, but tiddlywinks on the hundred and twenty-nine. And we're gonna see insurance go up again this year, more than likely. So my only quest to the town manager is if you want four, one more percent, please tell me where you're gonna put back some money back in the general fund.
Councilmember Bencina to go and answer your question. I think that's going to be, when we sit around for the budget with the vice mayor and you, we figure out where we get that money. What I'm gonna go ahead and tell you is this. So we're talking about six hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. We spent that on the plan alone. If you don't invest in your people, you're gonna have people that come in there that aren't able to go ahead and do the job and we're gonna spend that money anyway. What I'm trying to ask council to do is we have a great team setting onboard right now. We're saving money in some particular cases. We need to continue to go ahead and do that by investing in our people and keeping those people that are doing a good job here.
Let's also remember, we, even though we have not filled all seven positions, we have filled some of them at a cost of seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars a year. Okay? So do you kill the rest of the positions that are sitting out there to be filled to help pay for this? And don't come back and ask for them next year? So, I mean, you've got, you've got a lot of things, but I'm one person. You're right. I'm only one vote. But I stress my view because I represent, looking at the financial documents. We, we've got three years of survival, I am told, set on the books to help get a sue three years after Santan. Am I right? So all I'm saying is, I'm looking at financials, I'm looking at everything, and I'm stressing. Okay? We're gonna get to have to go race, look at tax levies again next budget cycle, you know? What are we gonna do? You know, residents are out there getting increases all the time on stuff they have to pay. They don't wanna pay any more property tax or anything. So my only thing is, if, if Santan or somebody comes after some of, one of our people, we're not gonna be able to stop them. They've got more money than we have. Okay? If they really want somebody, they're gonna make a salary offer that we can't compete with, or we're gonna have to evaluate, do we compete at it? And try to keep the person. But I, I don't look that, you know, we're gonna lose people. And I've asked for a turnover rate for the last five months and I don't have it yet. Turnover rate by director to see where are we losing people, cause that's, should be the concern. So that's just my view. I'm a council member, so I have stressed it. It's up to the other council members, but I can, I can vote for a three. Mo, thanks, Tony.
So it, it's, it's, um, our timing is kind of, for, I know this is gonna be, looking at constituents, gonna be like, well, hold up. I heard last council meeting that they were gonna, thinking about, and even in the paper, it said we're gonna raise tax, might raise taxes, you know, anywhere from two, three, four, up to three and a half, four percent. So, and as a constituent probably saying, whoa, hold on, they wanna give pay raises, they wanna take from me to, to pay their folks. But when in actuality, we need that revenue for, like, like Councilmember Bencina said, for our roads, for our infrastructure, for things that, that we were getting and we won't be getting because of Santan being incorporated. But this is just, in my opinion, this is just a part of that bigger piece of the pie. It's not the whole pie, it's just a piece of it. And I believe that if we're given a level of service to our customers, they'll, they'll be more apt to, to, to be on board with, with these, what we're proposing. Four percent, can we do it? Maybe. You know, three, I would, I would feel more comfortable with three, just, that's just my opinion. With three, because of where we're at, because, um, right now, if we were the other way around, if we had the, the horse before the cart type thing, I would, I would be on the four, if we, if we knew that we had voted a certain way to, to raise the tax levy. But because we're on this side right now versus on that side, for me right now, I would say three versus the four, just because of where we're at. And it, it's the timing type thing. So you guys get what I'm saying?
Yep. Nicole?
I also have some of the same concerns as Tony has, like, we have to figure out where we're gonna get it from. But I also have, I also understand, like, right now, we have an officer that's trained on motors and we're losing him to another agency possibly, and we just trained him. So I don't know if there's something that literally can be put into place to say, hey, if you take a specialty position, if we train you, if we send you to an academy, you're gonna stay here for three or four or five years, so we recoup that money back. Cause that's where we're losing a lot of it, is training people just to send them somewhere else or to give them a specialty to go to another agency. The other thing I was thinking of right now is our health insurance. So there was no increase for staff this year, from what I remember. I don't know what next year looks like, but if you guys have been watching the news and all this stuff, it's gonna be ugly. It's going to be very ugly and our premium as the town is going to be very ugly. And it's, you know, it's just something to think about. You, you always gotta sit here and look at both sides. It's not what I want, it's what we can do. I don't know if we can do four. I would be okay with two and a half. I would be okay with three, cause it's something. I think all of our staff know with the incorporation of Santan, like, we lost one point five roughly. I mean, I want, I, I want our staff, I wanna invest in our staff, but I feel like we need to start getting creative. And if they go to an academy, if, if, if we do something that we're gonna hold on to, to our staff as long as we can, I think there may be already something in place. But if there's not, something to kinda look into. But I think we can get creative, you know, to give something. But I, but I also see the other end, like, where is it gonna come from? And then I also, I just wonder what it's gonna look like next year when the nice gentleman that comes, I can't remember his name, every year, our insurance guy. And he's like, I'm trying to find, cause it's going to be a rough twenty twenty-six for insurance. And I don't want us to go bankrupt. I don't want anybody angry or leaving, and I do believe in our employees and I wanna invest in them. But if we give something, I think something's better than nothing. Because I think everybody is struggling right now, like, everybody's kind of maxed. The town, the staff, the residents, everybody's paying more, it seems. And, and, and I do agree with, like, the taxes going up and then giving increases. And I got a lot to think about, but it's not an easy decision. I just think we need to sit back and take all things into perspective and really just try to make the best choice. I wish we could give our staff five, ten, I mean, it would be great to give them that and to help them out during the roughest time financially that we've kinda come across in my lifetime. I've never paid what I've paid for groceries or anything lately. It's really rough out there, but, you know, can we do that? I don't know, but I think something is better than nothing. So that's kind of where I'm at. I just, I really truly do wanna invest in our staff and I also wanna hold on to them. I'm not saying put a contract in place to make them stay, but it's not cheap to send somebody to an academy. It's really not cheap. And then for them to turn around, come off probation and leave, that's where a big hit is, is, is taken sometimes by our town. And I think it's definitely something that, if we're not looking into it, that we should look into.
Councilmember, I'd like to reassure you of one thing. One, I'm really excited about the project management pilot program that we're doing. And just like with an academy, we did have them sign off on a contract stating that they will either stay with us for three consecutive years or they will pay us back for the program. We will talk and send out a notice to all of our department heads, because anytime we send someone to training, we do expect for those to be put into place. So if we've missed one, we just need to get our new department heads up to speed on what the standards of the town is. So you're correct. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So I have, I have one more issue that, you know, when I used to talk to my staff and employees, I used to talk about the benefits that we gave them. Now, they still paid for medical and so on, but I showed them the cost and the plan. So I went and looked, pulled up Chandler's twenty twenty-six rates for, for their insurance. An employee that have their best plan pays a hundred and one dollars a month. That goes, that goes down to their cheap plan with a big deductible of seventeen. So if you look at, uh, I think it's Mesa, their choice benefit plan, the employee pays a hundred and seventy-eight a month. Three hundred and ninety-six for the family. Okay? That's not happening in this town. So they're saving money on this insurance program that goes up every year, especially when it comes to the employee. The, the family gets a, gets a hit with the three and a half, four percent when, when we don't vote to, to, to take it and not pass it on like was done in two thousand twenty-four, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So I'm just saying, it's a benefit that you move from this town to another town, you better look at how much you gotta pay for your insurance policy. Because that's, that's a couple of thousand dollars a year. Now, do we have to fix some salaries? Yeah, I think we have to fix our salaries at police and fire, our openings, our opening. But I thought we're do, gonna look at doing that with our new comparable cities, right? So.
Vice, vice mayor, did you have something you next? Go ahead.
Councilmember Bencina, you almost had me agreeing with you. No, I appreciate the homework and the rigor that you bring to this, because that's the sobering factor, right? At the end of the day, none of us doesn't wanna pay our employees, right? It's an affordability question. Out, over, can it be sustained? And it's a level of expectation we set with these employees, right? So I don't need to impress upon you that should we go with four percent, how important it is the employees understand, we are making sacrifices to do this. This is not easy. It's not as if there's this big pot of gold and we're just randomly throwing money out. I am for the four percent, and I'll tell you why. Things are bad and things are going to get worse. And I know me as a hardworking sole supporter, four percent means a lot to me. Three and a half doesn't sound as confidence building. Minimal amount of difference, but still, four in this day and age is a lot of money. And what I would ask Councilmember Bencina to support is now that we're going into budget planning, it's a difference of two hundred thousand dollars. Can we not spread this out in all of our budgets and ask for some sort of reductions and better cost savings from every single director so we can afford this? This, two hundred thousand dollars, we're paying for a monument sign, right? And if it can make that much difference to an employee in terms of their morale and feeling valued, I'm willing to risk it because we're at the beginning of the budget season. I don't like having to do this separate from the budget, right? Ideally, we would be doing this with our budget, so we know what everything looks like. But if you're talking about a half a percent, a one percent difference, I can support the four percent.
I just wanna correct things, something. So think about operational money in one pot. Think about money that is for capital expenses in another pot, because Carl gets to do operational money and salaries are operational. So we just wanna keep that all in mind.
The other thing I would just wanna stretch is, if you look since twenty twenty-three, our budget has increased five point four million dollars.
Five point four million overall, right? Not CIP, operation, based on this sheet above it.
No, that's everything.
That's CIP also.
Well, that's, that's general fund.
General fund, all the general fund.
So operational.
Okay, so I got a question. So when I was working for Co-Sam, they, they sent you out a thing every year saying this is how much the, the services that, that we give you, medical and all that, this is how, like, they put a value on it. Do we send something like that to the employees? On a yearly basis?
Yes, in previous years we have.
So, so when was the last year that, that was sent out?
It is on our portal, on our benefits portal, when they sign up for benefits. It shows, you print out exactly how much you're paying and it shows what the town pays as well.
Okay, so it, it basically puts a value on it, like?
Yes.
This is the value of
Total compensation.
Your pay, your, your total compensation, so that the employee can pull it up and say, look, I'm debating whether I should go here or there or stay here, and I could compare, you know, these two, so they can do that already?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, cool. Thanks.
So for me, you know, going into this, and, and this is the most, you know, anytime we talk salaries, anytime we talk wages and how we pay, you know, it is the most emotional topic of councils or, or employees and out there in the field and what's going on at the kitchen tables and what's going on at the break tables, you know? And, and it is, and unfortunately, when employees aren't rewarded like maybe they think they should or we, that they take it personal. And, and, and you're right, and vice mayor, and I think every council member agrees without saying it, that we value very much our staff and our employees. And I think right now we have some of the best group of employees and, and staff that we've had for a long time. And, but, but it's also, and you've all said it as well, it's all trying to balance this. I have always been an employee supportive employer and looked what I could do. But I think when it gets down to these things, now trying to juggle the same pot of money, right? Every director comes out of the same pot of money. So when we're starting to give directors money and, and not personally, but their budgets. I mean, it, it's all part of it. Insurance, and I know, Nicole, you said this, and so my son-in-law happens to work in group health insurance. And yesterday we, we were having lunch, I said, what do you think? What's it gonna look like? He said, next year's an absolute bloodbath. He says it's just a bloodbath. And, and we're seeing anywhere from thirty, forty percent increases in, in, in that and, and premiums. And when we get into a point, so that very well happened next year, that the conversation that we're having is can we still pay our employees' share a hundred percent, you know, and, and what we can? So now we're, what, now we're making them pay their insurance and then we're not giving a raise, but sometimes you hope for a raise to at least help to pay your insurance that goes up, you know, and, and it's constant, and I, and I get it. And, but, but at this point, you know, my, my thought is, is the same. I could live with four percent. I think I could live more knowing what I know about everything else into the three and three and a half percent. And, and that's, trust me, our employees are worth ten percent. I mean, let's, let's get this, and it's just not lip service that's going on here tonight. It's just trying to balance out and try to figure. I am very nervous and very scared about the impacts of different things. When we get down to our CIP, I know we're looking at a whole bunch of different, different baskets of money. But looking at the prices, our transportations, you know, that's went up fifty percent on projects that we've, we budgeted are a hundred percent or two hundred percent. And stuff that we budgeted years ago now is coming to fruition at, got a hundred percent increase, you know? It's just everything, just trying to keep everything floating. So my opinion is, like I say, I, I could live with any of this stuff. I could live with it. My gut feeling throws me into the three, three and a half percent, just because I'm super nervous of the unknown. And, and it's a gut feeling. And I just don't also wanna come back to the employees and say, hey, look, we gotta cut employees. So, you know, you guys got your, you guys got this, but we gotta let you go. We gotta cut employees and so.
But now it went from five percent last year to three percent this year. They didn't lose any employees for that. You're not gonna lose an employee if you
You're not gonna lose an employee if you give a three percent pay increase, pay, uh increase this year. They're not gonna walk out the door because we didn't give them four. They've gotta start looking at budgets, they gotta start understanding how things work. And if you, you know, so you won't lose anybody if you go three, so. And I think our employees understand that. Yes. I I I think our employees understand that. They gotta understand the budget process, and it takes money and and the other things that go into running a business, running a town. There's gonna be things to give up. I do not want to get to a point, we budgeted ourselves out, and we're gonna have to look at cutting jobs in the future if that gets, we get so bad. We don't know what the state's gonna give us this year, but we do know we're down one point five. We're not getting back. Uh, and that one million never coming back with the prisoners gone, right? Yeah. So uh, that's my thing. I mean, four, sweet, love to do four. Boy, if we had, if we had, we had the money, but I'm just saying from the budget side, I don't see it. And three is a nice pay raise. I've, I do not see employees resigning from us from three. We have some issues to fix, pay in a couple departments. Hopefully, the new cities we've picked will help give us a better starting wage uh to help some of those departments out, but uh, like I said, I, you know. Councilmember Neal, you have anything?
I pretty much said my piece in the last executive session. It's it's too uncertain. We don't know what's gonna happen next year. At the end of the day, people still have to feed their families, whether they get a raise or not. I mean, everyone's not gonna pick up and leave Florence. I definitely don't like the fact about giving a raise. We're looking at raising taxes. Yes, everyone enjoy, it it should have a raise. I work for the county, I have a family to feed. I didn't get a five percent raise that I wanted, I didn't walk away. I don't know. I want to give a raise, of course I do, but um, word happened to buckling down and said, hey, let's weather this storm for a minute, and then let's see what we can do. At the end of the day, on this one, I'm just gonna ride with the council. I gave my piece, of course, no one wants to look like the bad guy, but somebody's gotta look like the mature guy in a situation.
Well, and I think, um, well, I think you're right. I mean, the unknowns, and and I think that that's, that's kinda where we're at, and then having conversations then come come next, next budget. At the end of the day, it's for us to stay within our means as the town, and to still get projects, because our our citizenry expects, they expect the services that they pay for already, and they expect the roads, they expect everything with that. And then I think these are just constant conversations. So with that, um, I know that we've talked about another, a couple of numbers. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to, I didn't wanna drop that conversation, that important conversation about insurance premiums and what's coming down the road. So we may not know if it's going to forty percent, but we know it's significantly going to increase. And when is the right time to start that conversation about having employees chip in? Because that is unsustainable, right? There's not a question, so.
I've already been.
Just feel like we need to tee that up, whether it's just internally now, but it's something, and and I'm always trying to get ahead of the game and start socializing these ideas and seeing how the employees feel, or educating them on the realities of our budget and where we're at. And I'd also like to get a sense of, is it really that strong a motivator for people to come here because we're paying your insurance, or is it kind of a nice to have? And I'm just saying, this is a rhetorical question for us to just start thinking about, because if it's not that strong a motivator, I'd like to consider starting to ask employees to cover some of their expenses. We can't go on paying.
All right, so tomorrow night then, so on, already advertised on our agenda, is the same, the financial impact, so we will still look at the same groups, so there's no, there's no consensus tonight?
So what you have on the agenda for tomorrow night, because what we were ready for is the agenda item on the discussion of resolution number nineteen seventy-two, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting reservation, revisions of Article Five, performance and evaluation and classification compensation. If at that time you want to make a motion to include the two thousand twenty-four or twenty-five, twenty-six increase, you can do so. Underneath that, typically what we do, though, is we typically write a resolution, call it a pay package, and print, present it to you. So you can also wait for that until December fourth, if you would rather wait for that.
So uh, so one of the things, if we do anything, and if if we vote to give them, it would, when would it take effect? It's thirty days, so if we were to do it tomorrow night, uh, we're still looking at the second pay period of December?
If you did it tomorrow night, it would be effective on the, what we have this resolution, so I would do it, uh, based on what your wishes are. I would write an effective date for that. So usually it's thirty days. This resolution is the resolution that takes us to four tenths and decides what type of lunch period we're going to have. And so if we're going to four tens with an hour lunch, four tens with thirty-minute lunch, four tens with zero lunch, and this is expected to be effective on January third?
Yes.
We, the fifth is a Friday, but the first of the pay period is the third. So if we're doing that, that's what this next resolution will do. I could write in a draft on the floor that would include a pay increase, or we could go with December fourth with a date particular.
It sounds like to me it'd be much cleaner just to do it on December fourth.
We can write it that way.
And that way, we've got some time, we've got some time to to go through. Councilmembers, what do you think?
I I do wanna ask a couple clarifying questions for Carl. So regardless of the percentage, right now, what Carl has stated to you, that only employees that have been here for one year will receive an increase. So there's always that line in the sand when we get to that date of who will and who will not receive an increase. You will get complaints. If we do a cost of living, you have to remember, a cost of living is everyone that is employed by the town at that day. So we're not doing a merit increase, so it's not based on anything other than your desires for the employees to have a raise. So what we need to know, is it all employees, or is it employees that have been here for a year? And is it part-time permanent only? Part-time permanent only is the employees that work at the senior center, work at the gym, work at maybe the police department. They're not the seasonal employees that are our rec leaders. They are the ones that are with us every year, and they've been with us for a long time. So we also need to know how you want us to treat them. Is there any other question you would need to have answered, Carl?
Um, no, but we do want it to start um at the start of the pay period, and um council could decide a six-month or a nine-month, right? If they're with, if they were hired within the last nine months, they're eligible.
What we could do is we could write it, we can write your pay structure for this year, we just need to know what you want. Carl had written concepts to say, if you're here twenty-five percent of the year, you get twenty-five percent. If you're here fifty percent of the year, you get fifty percent of the increase. If you're seventy-five percent of the year, you get seventy-five percent of the increase. And if you're a hundred percent of the year, you get a hundred percent of the increase. That changes these numbers, but we wanna do what you, what you have done.
So, because you have stipend on here also. So if if you did a stipend at fifteen hundred, that's basically the same as a three percent pay raise, except every employee gets fifteen hundred, even if they're making fourteen dollars an hour, right, versus thirty dollars an hour. They all get equal pay. It also doesn't affect next year, it doesn't stay in the budget, right? It's a one-time hit. So it doesn't increase our costs next year because we paid a stipend, right? Something to consider.
But it also does not go towards retirement for.
Understand.
So after we put this together, I I did think about um what Catherine said, another option we could do, if we did go a stipend, is public safety, um, could we true that up fifteen percent?
Can you do what?
Can you, could you increase the stipend fifteen percent to account for the loss of the retirement?
Stipend stipend doesn't go on anybody's.
It does, it it does go into ASRS.
It does go into ASRS.
But it doesn't go into.
I don't believe so.
It does.
Okay, good.
It, so it does? Okay, okay. Well, so that's different. And then, so then you're saying, because it does not go into PSPRS, so police and fire, we would, we would absolutely, we would.
That's an option.
Jump their stump, their fifteen percent, so they would get, in essence, more or less, I mean, kinda.
Right.
They would get, they would get at least that, well.
They would have the ability to put that into their four fifty-seven or four oh K.
They could pull that out.
Retirement option. They'd have to do that on their own.
So because we have, and and I think we've all talked about the gut feelings about, we don't know what's gonna happen next year, we haven't talked about a stipend that is a one-time thing this year and then goes away. Um, is that something that anybody wants to have a discussion about?
Well, it's like a staff. What's the feeling of a stipend?
Let the town manager.
So for me, um, I don't like the stipend. The reason I don't like the stipend is one of the major complaints we hear from public safety is that that stipend does not go into retirement. That's what those guys have signed up for, to go and get a retirement at the end of their twenty, twenty-five years. And so what I'm gonna tell you, we go with stipend, put it in the four fifty-seven, okay, couple of months down the road, they're gonna go ahead and say, I still haven't done anything for my retirement. So I would like to go ahead and see something that benefits an employee's retirement.
Would you consider possibly doing, you could always do an increase for police and fire, 'cause like the mayor said, police and fire are special. And if you wanted to do a stipend for people who are not police and fire, that would also be an option.
What do you mean, you don't wanna split it? What's that mean?
I like the idea of, yeah, I can do it. Fire, police, and just retirement, you know, it's just a different. But uh, so, yeah, I just, I like the idea of a stipend because it's, like, all the tenured years, but it does change. I don't know how the parents are based, mine was based on salary for the highest.
It is, it's, our, this is, all ours are two, the highest three. Vice Mayor, did you have something? I'm sorry, or Nicole?
Yeah, I was gonna say earlier, um, I think that the people should at least be off probation. I think that's fair to ask that any of the staff that do get the increase, when he was mentioning six, nine months or a year, I think they should at least be off probationary period. I think that's a fair ask to see if somebody's going to remain here or not before they get an increase.
Could, could that be, if they're close to their, could it be held from after, first step, and from after the review is done? Well, they got it. I mean, it just started at two months and three months, and that's one thing. But if you're eleven percent.
So when we look at this same page then, with the increases, we're looking at stipends. So a two thousand dollar stipend is the same as the three hundred and seventy-three, five seventy, that does not turn into six hundred and forty thousand dollars next year. And so there there, there's a difference. Vice Mayor?
Um, I don't care for that because it creates a two-class system. And I know, I I'm looking in terms of motivation to keep people with us as long as possible, and if they're working towards their retirement with us, I know it's transferable to other municipalities, but they reach a certain point, they feel like they're working towards that retirement. Uh, I I really like that. I don't know what our turnover rate is, but back to when we pay out, whether you've been here for a year or not, I kind of like the idea of waiting, you have to have been here for a year, because it reinforces the thought of you staying with us, and you have better chance of making more money by sticking with us. I don't like this job shopping, job humping, whenever you get a better offer, right? So I'm looking to encourage those people who really wanna make a career here.
Okay. All right, Mo?
So I've I've sat out interviewing folks uh where I work at, and that's the culture nowadays for the younger folks. When we see, look at their interviews and look at their package, you see, wow, this guy really jumped around a lot. And for our culture, our demographic that's here right now, sitting down, to us, it's a red flag, but in speaking to HR where I work at, they're like, that's the the culture nowadays, where they, they're either A, trying to, they're trying to do different things, or they're trying to find, chase a book. And that that's the culture from when we came to where the culture is nowadays. Am I, am I correct in in stating that? So it's not just where I work at, it's in other municipalities, like sometimes the younger generation has a different uh job mentality compared to us.
Oh, it does. Sherry?
The reason why I don't like stipend, because it gets taxed and everything like that, and once you tax it, you might get only eight or nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, and 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 I agree, I don't like stipends, I don't like them, but it was just.
Nobody's gonna actually change my mind on this. I'm I'm just being real. It's no way that I'm gonna give someone a stipend one time, and they get nine or eight or six hundred dollars. That's a slap in the face. So um, we're looking at these percentages, and that's what I'm gonna vote on, not no stipend.
Okay, that's kind of a feel, so we, but this will be what we're we're discussing tomorrow night then, so. All right, very good. Well, we just hadn't had that conversation, I just wanted to bring it to the table just to do that part of it.
Keith, just so you know, we're not discussing the stipends tomorrow night.
I don't think, uh, it appears that we are not discussing stipends tomorrow.
We're not discussing stipends.
We are not.
Over Sherri's dead body.
Yeah.
Stipends and the merit increase is on the work session.
Yeah.
But only policies are on the floor tomorrow.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
So we'll bring it back. So I wanted to tell you what we're hearing, to make sure that Catherine and I are trying to keep up with you all, but we're gonna draft based on what we're hearing. We're hearing you say, keep the merit words within, no, remove the merit from the policy and just leave it as increase to employees. We are hearing, we are going to do a percentage of increase, we don't know what the percentage is yet, but we're going to do a percentage of increase. It's going to be an employee who has been here at least a year, and it's going to be part-time permanent. And anybody that's over scale will be the only people who get a stipend, meaning if they are topped out. Do, are we correct in what we're saying out loud?
I I'm good with what you've just said, but if we could maybe possibly add something, I would like to get it out on the floor to the employees that under consideration or somehow presented to them that we pay their full benefits. I think that's an important message that we stress, that with this increase, we are still paying full benefits, and leave it at that. It's not up for a vote, but um, again, I wanna reiterate to our employees, I think they're very fortunate that we we pay this. It's part of their pay package, and it's a significant piece.
And I I will say too, that you're very correct in that, and that if we give notice that we're looking for possibly a different structure when it comes to June, we do need to give that notice now, because a lot of our families are are dual-working families. Both parent, both of the people in the relationship will have a job, and they'll both have benefits, so they've got a way out which one they get the better deal with, and we wanna make sure that they have opportunity. Yeah.
Okay.
Can we just, I don't know when we'll find that out, like, because we don't know what it's gonna exactly look like just yet, but as soon as we hear from our insurance company, like what it's looking like, can you guys give that information over? And then that way, we can tell people, because you do make a valid point. Some people choose this insurance 'cause it's covered, or it's covered more than theirs, but to give them options, I think, would be the respectable thing to do, but we just but to give them options, I think, would be the respectable thing to do, but we just don't know what we're looking at yet, I just know it's gonna be ugly.
Okay.
The other thing we can do is, I know in AFIS, you know, when I first started full-time, it was if you worked through retirement, when you retired, you got free medical insurance until you reach sixty-five for Medicare, then AFIS would be your, your backup and your pharmacy and everything else, for free. And your spouse got free. Uh, what they came along, after I'd been about eighteen years there, they came along and said, whoop, we're stopping that. And everybody's grandfather that is currently working, uh, at this time, you will get free insurance when you retire. Everybody going forward will pay fifty-fifty when you retire. That changed a lot of people's retirement date, because the half of insurance, when I retired, I was only paying $182 a month. Now they're paying 500 a month. Uh, so half of that, when they look at their retirement check, was a big hit for new people coming on, but they made a policy to grandfather, and if we do this, we could set up some type of a grandfather policy. So, and look at it for going forward.
I was one year away from that, or I would've had that as well. So anybody else? Do we have some direction then for, uh, December fourth?
Are we leaving a blank where the percentage is, and you're gonna sign it on the floor?
I believe so.
It has to be on the floor.
Yep, yep, leave it blank.
Is there any blank?
Yep. So we've got two weeks to have discussions. All right. Let's move to item four B. That is, uh, there, our discussion on this resolution, nineteen seventy-two dash twenty-five. Bruce, you wanna start this out, or Lisa? Who wants to take this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, I'll go ahead and start it out, and Lisa can go ahead and take us home. My only, um, concern about this one is, when we initially went out and started talking to employees about a four-ten schedule, um, I would say, out of everybody that I talked to, about ninety-five percent of our employees wanted to go to a four-ten schedule. One of the, um, major issues that they wanted to go in is that they wanted to go ahead and work through a straight ten hours. They didn't wanna go ahead and take a lunch. So that was something that, um, I wanted to go ahead and bring back to council. Um, so we have two options sitting out on the table. Option number one, um, is the employee taking their two thirty-minute, or two fifteen-minute breaks, they cannot be used in conjunction to go ahead and take a lunch hour. And then we have option two, which incorporates a, um, lunch period in there, thirty-minute lunch period, um, and also the two fifteen-minute, uh, breaks. One other consideration that I'd like council to go ahead and determine is, again, uniformlyly, our employees said that they did not want to go ahead and take a lunch break, they wanted to work through the straight ten hours. If we leave that option out there, um, those that wanna go ahead and take a lunch can go ahead and take a lunch, it just extends their work hour addition thirty minutes. So those are the options that are sitting out there. I'm just providing you the information that I got from our employees, and I talked to, I would probably say about ninety-five percent of our employees, and this is what they wanted.
So, so we used to require, in an eight-hour day, you had a fifteen, a thirty, and a fifteen. And some people said, well, I wanna take a lunch and I wanna go home early. Sorry, you can't do that. What we also found was, is employees were finding time where they would still eat their lunch, and that fifteen-minute break was being taken, and the other fifteen, they would find time to eat lunch, okay? So my thing is, is that, uh, I, I cannot see someone wanting to work a ten-hour day and try to scarf lunch down at a fifteen-minute break. Uh, no, I mean, I, I'm against four-tens, you know, it works in some places, it doesn't in a lot. I hate to see that our, we would shut down Town Hall and Finance, where people wanna come in and pay bills on a Friday. Uh, if we were doing four-tens and they spread it out, so somebody was always here on Friday, or every day of the week, we were open to accept bill payments or whatever. But when we started taking away from our, our, our residents, where they come in to pay for bills, uh, you know, some offices it works, some offices it don't, but, uh, you, you can't go four-tens at Walmart, cause you gotta be open for every day of the week, so. Uh, but I feel there should be a lunch built on.
Okay, Sherri?
Does it have to be across the board? The four-tens?
So.
Can you do public works, do four-tens? Um, community development, four-tens? Can you do it that way, or does it have to be across the?
So Councilmember Bedford, what I'm asking for is a four-ten schedule across the board, but that does not mean that portions of the town will not be open on Friday. So our public works section will be open, the library will be open, uh, those types of areas that we need to go and provide service to our citizens will go ahead and remain open. Um, our administrative functions will basically be on Monday through Thursday, um, type of deal. What we're trying to go ahead and do with this also is, if council knows, we had people on various different schedules, running across the board. I had people on five-eights, four-tens, and other different type of schedules. What we're trying to do is get a little bit of uniformity in regards to our employee work hours.
So coming from, so four-tens, so I came from four-tens. So I was part of the group, uh, in my former jurisdiction, uh, with the fire department. We did it, we did the pilot for the town. So at the time, uh, we were also the building department, uh, planning and zoning, and the fire department. So we, we adjusted our schedule, and, and I'm sure Bruce was thinking about this, because it's, there was times where I had to have a bill, a building inspector, um, five days a week, because we had building inspections that just had to be done. So we then had one building inspector working on Friday, he took Monday off. So, so it doesn't necessarily shut down, shut down, everything, you know, and because it is those services that, that are not gonna do that, or they can be flexed out if you need to have, uh, whatever that is, you know, of course, this fire department, police department won't be affected by this, it's other than administratively. Um, and quite frankly, my firefighters always seen this as kind of a day off for them, uh, because we weren't in the office. So it was kinda, they, they didn't hate that either. So, um, it absolutely does work. People that wanna pay their, are used to paying their bills on Friday, they'll pay them on Thursday, or Monday. It absolutely, or online, is what we would rather them do anyway, right now. It, it did not, and the reason that we piloted it, we could pilot it here. Uh, the reason we, we piloted just to see what it was gonna do, and we took, uh, which was my department, was probably the most affected, because we were building department, fire department, everything together. And so when we did that, um, then the town has been that way for the last three to four years, the whole, the, the town of Kingman does it, so. But I think it's important to point out that, um, this is an employee benefit, if the employee wants it. It's absolutely an employee benefit. Because what we did find there, and, and I'm good either way, it's up to our employees what they want, and it's up to our town manager, as, as far as talking with them, it doesn't matter to me. But, um, what we did find is that employees then were now able to schedule doctor's appointments on Friday without having to take off, or they were able to have three-day weekend vacations, where maybe they took a day off on Monday, and then they had a four-day, you know, and so what we seen was, the employees were saving their vacation time, they were saving their sick time. Now, one thing that we don't have here, as far as our employees with kids, is in my last jurisdiction, all the schools were closed on Friday. So that was, that was the benefit, is that their kids are not only out of school, but now they can take them to the doctor. So we, we did see it, and, and for anybody to come in and say, this is a benefit to the town, it's not a benefit to the town, it's, it's a benefit of, to our employees if this is what our employees want. Uh, I will tell you that there's gonna be, and, and this is from experience, employees that don't want it, uh, employees that, that are gonna have a hard time, sometimes with childcare, so now they have to leave home, now, you know, and, and I get that, and, and, but, but what I found, in my experience only, is that it worked out. And then it was, the benefits were bet, were, were bigger than the cons on it. So, uh, I'm, I'm either way, like I say, I've seen it work, uh, I know it works, it works just fine. Citizens don't, don't go up in flames because they can't come in on a Friday, they, they, you know, and if they get their water turned off, that was another thing, if they get their water turned off, somebody gets their water turned off, we've got people that I would assume, now I'm assuming, I don't know, that people are gonna be working here that can take payments and turn your water back on, you know, on a week, and they don't have to wait till Monday. So I think, I, I think that's it, I know there's not a lot of that detail in here. Um, then, so with that, I, I, I don't care, it's what the employees want, and I am more than happy to give them an employee benefit, if that's what they want. I believe in a half-hour, um, lunch break, I, I absolutely do, I, I don't want anybody to have to sit through, I, I get it, you, there's fifteen-minute breaks, and there's times where they can breathe, they can go to the bathroom, it's not like we, we stick them in a, you know, lock them in their office for that ten hours, you know, I think every, every department head is flexible with everything, so. Anyway, my opinion, uh, only. Nicole? Hang on. You go. Councilman? Nicole?
I was just gonna ask, um, and I haven't talked to anybody about this, but after you called me today, and I was like, no, I don't have any questions, I thought of a question. Um, right now, um, like, our directors come to our council meetings and, and our work sessions, like, is that still gonna be the expectation when they're on tens, or is it only gonna be when something of theirs is on the agenda for question, cause we have their reports, or is that, just asking Bruce, kinda what, what are your thoughts on that?
I think directors will probably still work sixty hours, even though that they're supposed to work.
So you're saying, keep them on, keep them on eighty? Eighty, forty? Eighty, forty, and call me during your lunch when I ask questions?
Yeah, no, there's, I don't think this is directors, I think directors don't have much expectations of, of, go ahead, Bruce, I'm sorry, I took that away.
Mayor, you answered it, so we're, that won't change.
All right, Snake?
I'm just wondering, cause I also don't like to shut down anything. When I was at the Sheriff's Department, we ran four-tens. I didn't want Friday, I wanted Monday. And, oh, I don't see why we can't split it. Hey, we even had some that would take Wednesday. Uh, Monday, Friday, Wednesday, that way you keep everything open, you run with a little bit less people, but if you want the four-tens, that's what you gotta live with, uh, and that is exactly what we all agreed to. It was a bunch of people that wanted Mondays off. So that way, you still get your three-day weekend, and you have your day, cause a lot of people just wanted that Wednesday, just to have that day where they do all their business, whatever. They weren't concerned about a three-day weekend. Me myself, I like not going to work on Monday. I'm trying to get four-ten where I'm at right now, so I definitely want it for the employees, but I just don't wanna shut down stuff. I don't, I don't see there's a reason to shut down anything, when you can just split that up and have half a crew. I understand if that department can't run with that half a crew, then you do something different, but I don't see any departments not being able to run that way without, with, with splitting up.
No?
So, I kinda brought this up too. Um, I'm, I'm with the, four-tens, I love it, I like it, but if I were to do four-tens at my work, I'd have to race here, if I get a police escort, or, or just show up late.
That could be, you guys were joking or something? Okay, you're gonna get your t-shirt dirty.
Uh, but, so, but, um, no, going back to the four-tens, um, this would be a great idea, definitely having the thirty minutes. Would, would, you have to have that, that break, that, that mental break, whatever, thirty minutes. Um, it's not like working at a prison where you're, like, just constantly going, 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 you know, you gotta have that mental. So I, I'm for the, the, the four-tens with the thirty minutes, uh, that, that's my mentality. And I'm also, uh, like councilmember Snake said, was, um, you, you gotta, I'm, I'm, I'm about having that, that flexibility of, of either having a Friday or a Monday, and having half the crew there, and we kinda talked about that a little earlier.
Vice, Vice Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm gonna say that terrible word, work from home. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about people with childcare, and I know the childcare near where, where I am, they shut the door at five o'clock, and I, I don't know what they do with the poor kids that, who parents haven't shown up to pick them up yet. So I'd like to just, um, have an option for those people that really have a daycare issue, uh, that they can work from home, do some work on Friday, cause I understand we can't open up the office just for one department person, but I just wanna make sure we accommodate people who have daycare issues. I think this is great, I love it, I love the idea of four-tens. I, I get it, why employees would rather say they're skipping their lunch, but honestly, that is not a good way, uh, to run your day, right? Ten hours, plus you had commute time to get there. So are you telling me you're gonna go eleven, twelve hours and not eat, and take a break, right? I don't believe you're working at your optimal best. Now, I don't wanna negate all the enthusiasm that people have for their four-tens, so I think, to me, I would leave that flexible for the employee that wants to take a break, they take a break and they work longer. I don't know how you manage that with the offices that have to be manned and opened from eight to five, or whatever the hours are, but, uh, I think it would dampen the enthusiasm if we forced them into that lunch break and extended their day.
Yeah, cause I would say, write it, that there's no eating at your desk. So if I see you having a lunch at your desk, sorry, that's, that's lunchtime. So, um, I agree with Councilman Neal, that you can do this where some staff are here, I mean, if we, we shut down, streets is gone, or utilities is off on Fridays, and there's an emergency, now it's overtime, versus you've got some staff here that can take care of, can take care of it. So, um, I think in some of these locations, like Finance and, and Town Clerk's Office and, and the others, it could be split up, and I agree, I always had people, said, I'll work Saturday, give me Sunday and Monday off. Monday, my, my kids are at, uh, school, my wife's working, or I, I wanna go shopping when it's less populated. Um, and so, different days a week, work for different people. So, like you said, Wednesdays, sometimes people want off just to get through, cause pulling four-tens is a little more difficult sometimes than you think, so.
Counsel, I just want to make sure that you all understand that public works, um, will be working during the whole entire week. Utilities will be working during the whole entire week, and our community services folks will also be working during the whole entire time of the week. And then we also have people that will be on call, um, should we need some type of service available as well.
So, so they're working flex, so some, some people will be off on Friday, some people will flex out on their Mondays then, or something, cause they work six. So, so, now, I guess my question is, I know that it's, you have people on four-ten, so this is available to them now for every department?
Yes, sir.
So are you, are you saying, as long as the department can come up with a four-ten schedule, they can go to it?
So, we, we have right now, what you're talking about, we call it in our policy and procedure, an alternative work schedule. In order to put in an alternative work schedule, it has to go through HR, and it has to be approved by the town manager. So some people work four-tens, some people work, I don't know, what else do they work? Nine-eighties, some people come in and they only do thirty-minute lunch. So we have all kinds of, um, things there. I do wanna point out one thing to you, and that is your outside workers, always be considerate of your outside workers, always think about them, in the winter and in the summer, because let's say that they're starting at six AM. Six AM is the date by law that you can go outside and you can start doing construction, you can make noise. They say five AM if you want to pour cement, but we don't pour cement every day. And so if you work ten hours, it's six AM to four PM. And they're outdoors all of that time. Do you want me to send out a building inspector?
Mayor, a couple comments. Um, so if we do go to four-tens, we will move shut-off date to either Monday or Tuesday, and that'll give them Wednesday, Thursday to come in. The other thing is, in finance... The other thing is, in finance, um, I haven't allowed the, the four tens. And, uh, part of the problem is, and I understand, you know, some people take Monday off and Friday. But my philosophy's always been, when I need you, I need you here the same day, day I am, you know? If Bruce or Lisa calls me and says, I got a problem with this, I'm not gonna say Julie's off on Tuesdays. Um, I'll get back to you. So, um, the consistency would really help in my department. And the other thing with COVID, when COVID hit, um, people that came in to pay their bills since COVID, I don't believe we've ever had two people in line. It's dropped dramatically. I, I get that, but the people that come in are the people that want to visit at the front counter. Um, and so, um, people are moving to online payment. So, that's where I see it from, uh, directors.
Let me clarify, cause I think the only place I heard it's gonna work, it's gonna work here in this building, and it's gonna work in community development. But it could be a problem for an inspection on a code enforcement on a Friday. So, I'm just saying that basically, cause you told me utilities and streets and police and fire, community services, senior center are still running five days a week, six days a week, seven days a week. Alternative schedules. Yes. So the only places is, we're looking at it is this building and community development, which could create a problem if somebody's not available on a Friday. For a code, a code final. A permit final.
Um, just to clarify, so, yes, this building would be closed, and so would community development. But the administrative staff in Public Works, administrative staff in the fire department, would be on four tens.
Right, not, not the firefighters, not the police officers, it's the administrative staff. And I think, and I think that's it. And so, I, I would assume, and I'm just assuming here, which always gets me in trouble, is that you want some consistency. So, I know, so there, it, when you work anywhere and everybody works different schedules, and then one department says, oh my God, why can't we not do that? Because those guys do that. I heard it all the time when I worked here. Is, is, you know, they work four tens, why can't we not do four tens? And so, so I, I, I absolutely get it. Is it something that, and you can't, we could certainly pilot it. Is that something we could pilot? I mean, at, at the end of the day, if you're talking to ninety-five percent of the people and, and our, our staff, who is, this is the staff benefit, is in favor of this, then it seems like that it should be kind of a no brainer on it, to tell you the truth. I don't know that it's, and I promise you that it's not gonna hamper, people are not gonna be bringing pitchforks and torches because they can't pay their bill on Friday. They'll pay it on Monday, so, so, I don't know. I, I, I'm, I, I really don't care. Again, I go back to whatever the employees are, are saying, and I'm taking for your word of it, that you've been talking to your employees, so, um, I don't know, anybody else? Sherry? Nicole, anything else? Oh?
I think the same thing. I think if you're gonna do it, keep it consistent. That way, if you have training, if you have coverage, you, people are taking vacations. And I think if you have people off on different days, which I like the flexibility of it, but when you get down to it, it's hard to rein them all in for training. It's hard to get coverage when you have people on vacation or sabbatical. It's just really hard as a manager to kind of get that covered. So, if you're doing this to try to get people together and in line and cohesive, keep going that direction.
Well?
So, one of the things, cause I was in an alternate, alternate work schedule where at my previous job, the, the biggest thing is you kinda fall through the cracks when it comes to communication. You don't get the communication from when the majority of the guys are there, or gals are there, to where you're the only guy in the shop that, that day. Sometimes the communication's not there. So, that's the only thing that I caution, is for those supervisors that are out there, make sure you're engaging with that, if, the person that, that's on that alternate work schedule, when no one else is there. So that way, they, they're getting the same communication that everybody else is. Because it kinda creates a, a sort of like, no one gives a crap about me type mentality, because I'm not getting the communication that I'm supposed to be getting, that everybody else is getting. So, that's the only thing that I caution about that, cause I've been on the receiving end of that, and it's not cool. Um, the other thing that, that Nicole brought up was, when we go to this four ten schedule, they won't be using up as much time throughout the year. So we have to caution that, as an employee, my guys don't all wanna take off the month of December, at the same time. Cause y'all have seen it happen, now I don't have enough people to, to do the job. So, I'd strongly caution that people put in, uh, schedule forecasts, their, their time off. So that way, not to say that it's set in concrete, but just, just to give those managers and those, uh, those directors that, 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 uh, crystal ball kind of, and, and that way, nobody wants to take off. Everybody wants to take off in, in December. So, those are some of the things that we need to consider, so. But I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the four tens, because look, we may not be able to pay you five, ten percent pay raise, but look, we can give you this. And that's, that can be a, a difference, you know? And hey, should I stay, or hey, should I go? So, that might be it, who knows?
Well, I, I've seen it in, in where I worked, when, and it ended up the people that wasn't for sure that they wanted to do that, was actually the biggest fan of it, now try to take it away from, uh, ninety-five percent of them, you know? And, and, and I think it's everywhere you're gonna run into. We had, we had about eighty percent of the people said that, that they were good. We had twenty percent that, the ten, five percent that was a little vocal, they just weren't gonna do it. Again, they didn't leave, and they then, half of those people, you couldn't take it back away from them after this. And so, when, when I always used to say, well, we work four tens, like, oh my God. People would always say, oh man, I wish I worked four tens. So, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm good with that too, so. Um, so, I, I guess I could ask then, so that a lot of the questions that we've got is, what's gonna be available during the course of the day? I know that, uh, Tony has mentioned if, if we're getting called out for, is it runs into overtime now? And who's gonna be, is it possible to do kind of a, a, what your day in the town looks like with the employees that are here, that are actually gonna be here five days a week? Or staffed, or what department it's gonna be? So we kinda get it. So for instance, when I, and, and AJ, I don't know if you're planning on having a building inspector on Friday, or you're not planning on anyone there, you know, or whatever that looks like. But if I knew that every day, or on Friday, when everybody's shut down, that I've got whatever this is, and I'm just saying this, I've got a building inspector, I've got, I've got, uh, somebody in water. Of course, we'll have the water plant, right? I mean, you, those people don't take off. They'll, they'll probably flex, right? They'll flex whatever time. And I'd just like to kinda see what that skeleton crew looks like on Friday.
Okay, so for utilities, currently under our permit, we have to have someone at the wastewater plant every day of the week. So on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we now have two. We have an operator four, who's the senior operator. We have an operator three, who is actually an operator four, she was hired a few weeks ago. So, one of them will be there either to, um, take samples, or, um, do file of reports, do all the paperwork, all of that, on every day of the week. Um, so they'll have to alternate. How they're gonna write that schedule, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but they do have to be there. We also have two operator ones who are working under them, and they're, they're toodling them to get them to rise in certifications, so that hopefully we'll have redundancy, um, at the operator two and three levels. Um, that's a little ways away right now, but these two are coming along very well. So that's how wastewater will look. And then currently, water, um, you know, they're not mandated to be there, but they will fill in, and they'll have their overtime schedules, or their regular schedules.
Their on-call schedules?
Yeah, they're already, they're already set, that, that's not gonna change.
Cause those guys work four tens anyways, already, right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
For our utility guys, or water guys, um, they'll go ahead and work, a group will go ahead and work Monday through Thursday. And then the second group will go ahead and work, um, Tuesday to Friday. Did I get that right?
No, Monday through Thursday, and then you'd have to go Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, the water crew's not gonna work over the weekend, they'll split the shift so that they're there throughout the week, is what it is. So one group will go ahead and work Monday through Thursday, next group will go ahead and work to Tuesday to Friday.
But they're currently doing that right now.
They're doing that right now.
So, this is not a change to Public Works?
Not necessarily.
Uh, man, I'm just, I have to throw this out here. Uh, if our department heads can't ma- manage a four ten schedule, I mean, good Lord, I mean, you work a four ten schedule, you tell an employee, hey, we got training coming up this week, you're over fives. It's simple. We have this coming up, this week you're not working your four ten schedule. Uh, I, I mean, that's pretty cut and dry, that's, that's, that's cake walk.
So, so on weeks with holidays, uh, on Friday, are you gonna switch to a five eights for that week? Cause there's a?
No, I'm gonna rewrite the holiday policy.
Okay.
And the vacation accrual policies. And, yeah, so that's gonna change. That'll come on the December fourth agenda. We needed to know what was gonna be approved, or not approved tomorrow. If you move to a ten hour day, then what we're assuming that you're telling us is that you also want us to a ten hour a month sick leave, ten hours a month earned vacation leave. You're not asking them to go into their bank when they miss one day a month, correct? Cause right now, they gave, they work an eight hour day, they get eight hour leaves a month.
Yep, Nicole?
That's, that's a question, because like right now, at the county, if you're on tens, and you have that holiday off, they only pay for eight, so you have to take two hours out of your accrual.
Yes.
So that's something to think about.
For a hol- for a holiday.
Holiday, for holiday.
Right now, for Florence, if you're on four tens, like my team, I have a member on four tens, and they switch and they come in and they work eight hours all that week, and then they take off the eight hour, then they take the eight hour holiday. So that's another thing we need to know. If we're moving to, if we're moving to ten hour days, are we pushing and to, are they earning ten hours a month sick leave and vacation leave?
No.
Or are they still working and just earning eight?
No. You're increasing the benefit now. Your accruals are bigger. You know, and that costs the town more money.
It will cost the town, but we need to know, cause we need to write those policies and procedures. Accrual time means that if you, if you work here, um, for one month, you earn one day of sick and one day of vacation.
No, no, I understand that. What I'm saying is, when I worked for the school, I was under ARS, I went to the courthouse, they get, brought me in at a higher accrual time for my sick and vacationing when I hadn't started. And that's for the retirement system, not for the work.
So, you get accrual rating at a higher rate, and so, Catherine, what are they? Some people earn twelve hours, some people earn fourteen hours, some people earn two weeks a year. If you've been here a long time, you earn a month, a year, or five weeks, a year.
I assume what Councilmember Neil is referring to is, Penal County honors your P, your ASRS time.
Transferred.
System for, for their accruals. We, we don't do that here.
But, and no, so you'd be, if you go to ten hours from eight hours, you're increasing the benefit that actually ends up costing the town more money. Yes.
And, and that's what we're asking. So right now, police works twelve hour shifts, but police only earns eight hours a month. Do you want us to keep the accrual rate the way it is, or do you want us to up the accrual rate? And if you tell us to up the accrual rate, we will up it across the board, both fire and police as well.
My thing is, I, my vote is you leave it, you leave it like it is currently. Yeah, and every time, everyone that I've seen and been involved in, not just mine, has been that same thing. And, and it is a point of contention on occasion, is that, but if I take a vacation, uh, day, and during my week, then I have, so that vacation costs me two hours. Yeah. And so it's just, I've never seen it anywhere else. I get it, I understand, I, I know exactly what you're wanting to do there. But I've never seen it any other way, because, because the eight hours just works.
We're thrilled to leave at eight hours. We, we were worried about the benefit cost, the payout when people leave, after accrual. Remember, we also give people a percentage of their sick leave as well when they leave. And so, there's a lot of money on the table when you're talking about accrual rates. So if you want us to leave at eight hours, that's policies we don't have to rewrite.
I think that's, I think we all agree, that we're all agreeing at eight hours. Okay? Yeah, leave alone. I, I just wanna go back to what Vice Mayor Adams said about, and Bruce, this wasn't a one hundred percent. You had, you had employees that were not foregoing to four ten, four tens. So, what's the reason those employees didn't wanna do it? Was it because it was gonna mess with their childcare? They were gonna miss some sporting events by having to stay later? Uh, was going to, you know, sometimes I'm getting off and my husband's going to work, or I'm getting off and my wife's going to work, and I'm there to babysit. So, what are we doing about the five, or eight, or ten percent that didn't wanna go four tens?
So the predominant, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, the prominent reason that we had a few that, um, didn't wanna go to the, um, um, ten hour schedule was because of daycare. Um, but I do know that we're trying to go ahead and look at perhaps opening up the, I call it the AMPM program, what do we call it? Yeah, the before and after school program, so that, um, our employees can go ahead and drop their kids off, um, in the mornings and pick them up in the evenings.
Love it, that is excellent. Excellent.
Yeah.
So we could, and, and I think probably, and again, I, I'll go back to experience, and I just, I have that to pull from, at least on this, is that half of that ten percent, you couldn't take four tens away from them for nothing coming up. And so, I, I, I don't know, I think people start looking at stuff. Now, you're, you're not looking at this as a pilot, you're looking at this as a permanent, uh, and then you will just gauge it as far as evaluation stuff. So, you just threw out something, you're gonna open an AMPM, and I love it, but what's the cost to do that? Babysitting, drop off.
So my understanding is, uh, Lisa, you can piggyback on this for me, I think it's fifteen dollars.
The employee's gonna pay.
Well, we're looking at the program for us to go ahead and allow our employees to drop off.
What's, what's, what's it gonna cost us to have that program?
We already have it.
You have it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, alright. So, is it fair to say that we agree with the town manager, and we want to add in the half in, half hour lunch to move forward with?
As optional? Do we have to say that you must take a half hour lunch?
Well, and we have some awesome employees that just work through their stuff anyway, and don't, and get charged for lunch. So I don't worry too. I think that, that, I think, I think their supervisors can, can handle that, you know? I have confidence in that. But I, but I do, I do believe, for me, I'm one, I like, I like a, a perm, a half hour mandatory, but that's okay. So, is that where we're gonna go?
Let me go back and let me paraphrase what we've heard so far.
Okay.
We are moving collectively the town of Florence to four tents. The town of Florence is offering before and after program to employees that live within the city limits for free. Or, let's say they go to the Florence School District, cause we don't offer it anywhere else. So, those that go to the Florence Unified School District, that's where we offer the before and after school program. So we're offering that for free to our employees.
Uh, do, do we have a rough idea of how many of our employees that utilize that service, and how much, what that number is?
So, I'm, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm not sure, um, how many actually utilize that program, but it was something that we discussed as an opportunity for our employees to go and utilize. utilize.
So how many, how many do we have utilizing currently, not our employees, as people drop them off? Are we at our max, or do you have to add another employee because of the standard rules and number of workers versus kids?
If we add another, Councilman Bencini, if we add another employee, it will be a part-time employee with Parks and Rec, they're, those are the individuals who run the before and after-school programs. So it's less than twenty hours a week because it's just a couple hours in the morning. I'm sorry?
How many hours a week is my pay?
Minimum wage.
At minimum wage.
So fifteen?
It's a little over fifteen, starting July one. No benefits.
So security, probably.
Yeah. I'm sorry, January one. Yeah.
So it's still going to cost some...
Possibly, yes.
Well, those are just pieces of string numbers. I don't, we don't know until we...
Turn off the lights in their department while they're gone on Friday.
Maybe we could get a, maybe we could get a...
Well, also, won't they be having to work earlier and stay later?
Maybe we could get a report on that program sometime and just give us an idea of how many people actually take advantage of it?
Done.
I think it's a great idea to employees for free. Come on, I mean, they're, they're there anyway.
I'm listening.
Yeah. Yeah. And you're, our employees, it's another good benefit, and it realistically, we're there anyway, it doesn't really cost that much. So, but maybe a report on that come up.
The time. If they're going to be on ten-hour shifts, they're going to be going to work earlier or getting off later. Do we factor that in with the employees that do the after, before and after school?
Seven to five-thirty, correct, with a half-hour lunch?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What do they work now?
We've, we've stated that our office hours that we're going to be open to the public are eight to five, Monday through Friday. Bruce, can we be flexible on the thirty minutes, whether employee wants to come in thirty minutes early because they're a morning person or stay thirty minutes late for their lunch? So some people could work five-thirty, some people could come in at six-thirty?
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with that. If Council's okay with that.
All right. So we got flexibility of a thirty-minute lunch, but we do have a thirty-minute lunch. Have I summed it up correctly?
Yes.
Okay, then we're prepared to write a policy that will be accurate.
Okay, now let me throw a bomb back in this because I guess I didn't realize, I thought that we were going to be open the whole time at seven to five-thirty. We were going to be our office, so our offices now, so our office hours did not increase, they decreased to the public.
I don't like that.
Huh?
Office hours would be the same.
It's eight to five.
Eight to five.
So, so we're, so, but we're here seven to five-thirty. So one, one of the things, this is a benefit, and I'll just throw this out here, that I heard more times than not, and I hate to be that guy who's like, wow, we used to do that here. But what was nice is because we were open at seven o'clock, the offices were open at seven o'clock till five-thirty, is people wanted to come and pay something before they went to work. They were open at seven on their way to work. They were, after when they got off work, there's a half-hour over. I would say that was probably the thing that made the deal for our customers or for our citizens, is that they now were able to come in at seven o'clock on their way to work, especially when you're talking about coming downtown, when they work downtown or school district or whatever, drop their kid, they drop their kid off or getting ready to drop them off, so, you know, I'm going to jump in here real quick and pay a bill.
It's rare as well if you've got contractors, you've got developers, planners. And if we're going to take that Friday away, having that extra time in the morning, early, when they start their day or at the end of the day is very important.
And, yeah, and I apologize for bringing this up last minute, but as I'm reading back through this, that was, yeah. I will tell you, that was a huge benefit that I heard more times than not from our customers, is that this is awesome. I can pay on the way to work.
So that's one of the things I saw when I, when I was doing a search last night, that the other municipalities that did do it, they got great feedback from, from their customers, from their constituents about what you're just talking about, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that fair?
It's a no-brainer.
Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments or thoughts on that? Anybody? Staff?
Bobby.
About the switching the hours to seven to five-thirty?
The only reason why we talked to the department heads and the only reason why we switched that up is because of the number of meeting times. So that's where you're meeting, and then you're going and you're having moments to where you're actually grinding out the work, to allow for more hours that were uninterrupted to be able to produce work. And so that's what's the thought, is if they weren't sitting at the counter, like, say, my team, if you're not sitting at the counter, it's an hour we can be in our vault, right? If you're, if you're not answering the phone, it's an hour you can be writing reports. And so we were looking at that, but if council wants to go the direction of having those office hours open from seven to five?
Well, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be standing in line at seven o'clock. There's many days I didn't have anybody, and there's, there's many days at three o'clock I didn't have anybody till five-thirty. And, and we found that, so...
It's a simple code change because we haven't ordered anything for the doors yet.
Yeah, but it's, but it seems like, thoughts, council members? I think it's a benefit for our people. If we're taking a day away from them, we're giving them time before, before and after. Okay, let's, let's do that. You good? Okay. You guys good? Carl, let's look at some directors here. What do you guys think?
So we were paying attention. The, the, I guess, the, the, back to the question of the holiday, whether it's eight or ten hours.
Wait, go and answer their question.
We've went way past that. Where have you been? You guys have been talking over there.
I'm already three questions ahead.
Their question is, if you're open from seven to five, will that affect the team or not? Or do you need that hour closed to take care of the public? That's what they're asking.
No, I don't think it will hurt community development if we open up straight away at seven. No chance people are walking in. Also, I think there's been a lot of conversations about COVID and what COVID did to the department. COVID and then following COVID, if we have two or three people walking in the office on a daily, that's two more than usual. Not going to show up at seven in the morning. So we'll have, we'll have the office. It wouldn't matter if we were open at seven. I really don't know how many customers we're really going to help by having that extra hour open.
Yeah, you know, I, I think so, so, okay. All right, does there, is there anything else? I think we've given guidance on that.
Oh, we're not going to, you didn't want to hear my other thing?
No.
Okay, yeah. Lisa, can, now that we've backed up again, can you summarize then again?
We are removing the word merit from this policy so that no one is confused. We are moving to four tents. We are going to have all buildings open from seven to five, and employees will have a half-an-hour lunch. Are we going to do seven to five-thirty? Well, because our employees are choosing whether they're coming in at six-thirty or seven-thirty, the thirty, so if I have flexibility, I need that flexibility.
Yeah, the five o'clock ending is fine with me. The opening it early would be a benefit.
So seven to five. That allows people to decide whether they want to come in early, leave late, and nobody has to say we're mandated to those hours. Do I have it all right? That is what your policy will say tomorrow.
Now, there's a whole bunch of other stuff on here. Does anybody else have any questions on the rest of these thought processes, standby policies, or anything else?
So I want to bring up what AJ was bringing up. AJ was sidebarring to talk about when the employees go out and when they have ten hours of holidays, ten day, ten holiday days, then they are going to have two hours for each one of those holidays that will be taken off vacation. But I explained to him that each department head can decide, the employee can choose to take those two hours off, or the department heads can say, okay, I will let you come in eleven hours for two days to make up those two hours. It's within, it's within the control of the department head. So we don't need to actually make that a policy.
Correct.
All right, we all agree? Okay.
Then they will, then it's up to the supervisor to confirm that they're working. So...
You okay? You okay with it?
If I were a staff person, I would hear, I just lost two days of vacation.
And you're getting a vacation day off.
I've already worked it. So I, I, how did I get an extra day? I'm still working, but I'm losing two hours of my vacation.
I personally don't have a problem. If it's a holiday, give them ten hours. I don't have a problem with it. It'll create a lot of mess and a lot of paperwork to track two more hours.
Yeah, because I think it was two separate questions. One was the value of the holiday, forty-hour of four-ten week versus how we accrue vacation time. I, I think those are two separate topics.
No, that's how the county does it right now, is if you're on tens, you get paid for eight-hour holidays. So if you're on a ten alternate schedule, then you either put in for your two hours or you work an extra two hours that week to make up for the ten that you would be off.
And it works. It, it works. It, it's always a point of contention with some. I mean, it, it is, but it, it actually works that way, and then you can flex that schedule, those hours out or whatever.
Thirty minutes, thirty minutes extra for four days, two hours.
I don't know if anybody would have a problem with it because you're getting four extra days off a week that you don't have to put in vacation time for either. Because you now have four days out of the month, he's not listening, but you have four days out of the month to make your appointments, take your days off, take your time off, see your doctor, that you're not putting your vacation in for. So that's really forty hours, you know what I mean? Like...
And, and how many vacation, or how many holidays do we have? Fourteen?
We have twelve.
Twelve.
But they're not all...
But they're going to change because we might have those, the ones that fall on Friday, like the day after Thanksgiving.
The day after Thanksgiving, we're going to take those hours and apply them to a different holiday because it's always going to fall on a Friday.
Yeah. Okay.
So those changes, we will have to bring back before you.
So there's a plan for these things that we've been addressed or been asking.
Yes. So there are communities that they've taken out the random holidays, and what they've done is they have done Christmas Eve, they close, and the day after New Year's, they open up. And they go in and, and they do something like that. And then it's a huge benefit to the employees when you're working four tens, and you go back and look at it, if you can drive your holidays to that area. Are you interested in us doing something like that, or are you just interested in us removing the holidays?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
How about you guys, if you see something that's better as you're working through? It looks like, you guys have done some work on this, so it's not, it's not, this is, you understand where we're at with it, I think. So, okay. So, I mean, I want to clarify. So does the director have the clarity that if the employee says, I, I would like to work two more hours during the week, a half-hour a day for, for four days, gives me my two hours versus two hours vacation? That's okay? Can be done? Okay. All right, that's between the manager and the, and the supervisors. Okay, is there anything else? With that, let's see, let me see, where are we at? Have we got direction? You, have you got everything you need tonight, sir?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, I think we have everything that we need. Most of what you see on the policy with some of the blue is just more or less administrative type items to go ahead and tighten up the policy, other than what we discussed previously.
Okay. So if there's any, when you guys go back through and review this, maybe something we didn't talk about, if you have any questions, make sure you call Bruce and get clarifications prior to tomorrow. With that, we'll go to item five is call to the council. Councilmember Bedford, do you have anything to add for tonight?
I have nothing.
All righty. Councilmember Bencina.
I'm good.
All right. Councilmember Maldonado.
I just want to say, I hope, I think this is really productive, and I, I really think that this is going to be a driving force going forward, and having someone decide whether or not they want to still work for us or they want to come on and work for us. So I'm really glad we did this legwork because this is a pivotal time in our history.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Buchalata.
I just think that you guys are keeping the staff in line, but everybody here is keeping the staff in line. I think they're going to be so happy to have four days off extra a week or a month. And they're obviously incurring a lot of expectations on what they normally use for time off, days off. I think it's definitely showing that there's a problem. And I think with the, hey, I think that's a really good discussion. And I think we're all being pretty level about this. And I don't think we're all too far off from each other. I think that that's definitely well needed and a lot of points to follow. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Neil.
I just want to apologize to Councilmember Mo for being late. Apparently, he's my boss. I don't have, I don't have anything.
All right. Vice Mayor, anything?
I think this was an excellent session, and I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank everybody for doing this in a work session, because I know we did this in executive session, but you could see how much more we got out by doing this work session, and I think we came out with a better product. And I also think it demonstrates our commitment to our people, right? Every single discussion we had tonight was to make their lives better. And I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I only have a couple of things, and I'd like to echo, for one, one thing, once again, I'm so proud of this council and the conversations that we have. And we don't agree, and, but we move forward and we look at the betterment of the town. And I appreciate our staff. The team puts a lot of time into this stuff. This isn't just stuff that just dreamed up yesterday. So, and I appreciate that and what, what our team does. The most important thing right now is the Cowboys are up thirty-one to nine over Las Vegas Raiders. Go Cowboys! So I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.